I believe the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with clarity and justice for all.
The city clerk, please take role.
Karen Adams.
Here.
Karen Berry.
Here.
Joseph Demott.
Here.
Joyce J.
Here.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
Davis Reinhardt.
Here.
Wanda Sang.
Here.
And Mike Stites.
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of July 26, 2010?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Sang. Any changes on the minutes? Please poll the council.
We have one proclamation tonight. We'll ask Mrs. Wheatridge to read the proclamation for the annual Carnation Festival Week, August 14 through the 21st, 2010. And I believe Sherry John here to accept.
Okay, let me report the vote.
Oh, sorry.
The vote is seven to zero with one abstention by Councilmember Berry.
Thank you. Go ahead and sign.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, citizens of Wheatridge. Good evening. Whereas the Wheatridge Carnation Festival, an annual event, is celebrating its 41st year, and whereas the Carnation Festival is a series of events in the community commemorating the history and traditions of Wheatridge and celebrating our citizens, businesses, and service organizations, and whereas the Carnation Festival mission is to showcase a Wheatridge-specific community celebration featuring all the uniqueness and positive energy that our city and its residents have to offer through a broad-based and diverse effort, and whereas just a few of the events scheduled for the two-day Carnation Festival at Anderson Park include nightly concerts in the park, various contests and booths, artistic and cultural events and displays, and events for kids of all ages. Anderson Park is located at 44th Avenue and Field Street, and whereas the festival includes a fireworks extravaganza at Anderson Park on Friday night and a Carnation Festival parade on Saturday at 10:00 a.m. along 38th Avenue. Now therefore, on behalf of the City Council, I do hereby proclaim August 14 through the 21st, 2010 Carnation Festival Week.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is citizens' right to speak. It's my understanding we have a little bit different format tonight, so I wanted to find out if council wanted to waive council rules, which allows up to nine minutes for presentations, because it's my understanding that the CEC wanted more than nine minutes. So does somebody want to make a motion to waive the time limit on the rules, on city council rules?
I move to waive the time limit on city council rules for the CEC presentation.
I second it.
Please poll the council on the waiving of the rules.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, first on the agenda was public input on the 2011 budget. Please step forward if you have any comments, public comments, on the input for the 2011 budget. Please state your name and spell your last name for the record. Seeing none, we'll move on to the CEC presentation. Please step forward. Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
My name is Ron Abo, A-B-O, and I am speaking on behalf of the Citizens Exploratory Committee, and we have a presentation of our final report. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, staff, and citizens of Wheatridge. We were created by Council Resolution 24 and subsequent Resolutions 26 and 35, and we were tasked with four basic things: to study the effectiveness and efficiency of the council-manager form of government, to study the effective and efficiency of other forms of government and the associated Wheatridge City Charter issues, make recommendations to City Council on each form of government that we studied, and report the findings on the form of government by the first meeting in August. And we met for nine weeks during this process. So the members of the committee, and I believe we're all here tonight, are myself, I'm a community member and co-chair, Cheryl Wise as a business representative and co-chair, Larry Schultz, who is elected official, and he's a representative, and Amy Sherman, who's a regional representative, Mo Keller, who is a resident and state senator, Gretchen Servney, who's a resident and former mayor, Ralph Mancinelli, who's a resident, former City Council member, Nancy Snow, who's a resident and former City Council member, and also Heather, I want to acknowledge Heather Geier, who was our able staff person and kept us very well organized and informed. And we had a facilitator, Carl New, who is an independent consultant to city governments, and he helped us in this process. We took a look at basically five forms of governments, and you see these on the slide, the strong mayor council, which we kind of rejected right away because, for one, it's for, we felt it was for a big city. Denver, in fact, is the only city in Colorado that has this strong mayor council arrangement. The mayor council form, the council manager, a commission form of governance, which is where commissioners are elected at large and they are responsible for a city department, and after looking at it, we didn't feel it was appropriate for Wheatridge. And the town meeting, where basically everybody gets together in the town and decides on policy and how to run the city, and we also thought that this was not an appropriate form of government for Wheatridge. And so given that, you know, we did get a lot of information about the mayor council, council-manager form of government. We went through a list of pros and cons for each. And in the final analysis, the committee, and I'm going to read from our final report, page nine, "In the final analysis, the committee believes the effectiveness, efficiency, and the quality of representation, professional administration of city operations, and services provided have less to do with the form of government than with the commitment, competence, character, beliefs, and motives of those occupying the elected and appointed official positions within the city." And so with that, I am going to turn it over to Mo Keller, who is going to talk about how we arrived at our conclusions.
Thank you and good evening. I would like to begin on page two, which is the criteria for evaluation of forms of government. And Heather, do I just click to get to the, okay, there we go. We started off on the premise and the question of what are we trying to fix? What is the problem? Is there a problem? If there is a problem, what is that? How do we identify it? And we spent a great deal of time, actually more than one meeting, on the value statements that reflect the historical desires, as we saw it, of the voters of Wheatridge regarding the performance of our municipal government. And so with that, we identified 11 criteria that we wanted to use in terms of any recommendation and in terms of looking at each one of the alternative forms of government that we might want to address. So to what degree does this form of government provoke the following things: adequate representation and participation of citizens, creation and achievement of a citizen-driven vision for the future of the city, council members' authority and ability to represent citizens and to vote, deal with, and ensure a response to citizen concerns, opportunities for appropriate individual City Council members to have contact with city staff members, clarification of the roles and powers of various elected officials, mayor, council, the manager or the administrator, staff, and citizens in determining budgets, both operating and capital, open, honest, and candid communications between administration, staff, elected officials, transparency and access to public information, high staff morale, professionalism of staff and elected officials, productivity achieved through demonstrated public and council support for the administration and for staff, and staff's protection from undue political influence and the agendas of individual elected officials that may not be in concert, effective, efficient, and prudent management of all city operations and the use of city revenues and resources, responsible economic development and redevelopment supporting the city's economic vitality, and lastly, a strong community and regional leadership and intergovernmental collaboration. So having taken all those into question, we, like I say, we spent quite a bit of time on that, we wanted to have that as our criteria for any one of the forms of government that we were analyzing and potentially recommending to you this evening. On page four, you'll see a chart. We had a presentation by Sam Mamet from the Colorado Municipal League, and we asked him, and he provided for us, a sample of five cities in the area who were similar to Wheatridge in population by number and demographics, and what kind of system of government they have. And you can see those listed here. One of the interesting things to us in this particular chart was the last column, city manager, and how they choose to select their city manager. Some are appointed, some are majority council, one is two-thirds council. So there are variations on the council-manager form of government, a number of different variations, actually, so that it doesn't have to be a strict model. It is malleable, in the sense that you have, as a council, the ability to take the concept but make it germane to Wheatridge if you so chose. The advantages and disadvantages of the mayor council and the advantages and disadvantages of the council-manager form are in your packet. We felt they were too long to put up on a PowerPoint and to have a discussion with this evening. We'd be here for an hour, the way we were. But we spent at least two meetings on the advantages and disadvantages of each of these forms of government as we saw them. Some of the advantages and disadvantages were things that may not necessarily be applicable to Wheatridge via its history or via its current administration, but simply things that we saw that were potential pitfalls. So we hope that you will go through those at your leisure. So after lengthy discussion, and it was lengthy, I might add, a motion was made and passed to recommend to the Wheatridge City Council that the city keep operating under the council-manager form of government with a proposed city charter amendment providing for the mayor to continue being elected at large, we felt that was important, but as a member of City Council, he would have full, or he or she would have full voting privileges, but no veto or executive authority. Now that's the recommendation that we agreed to as a seven to one. We do have a descending member, but we agreed to that, and we have listed our rationale for that. The rationale that we had, and we had discussion about this at length as well, after we made the motion then, we talked about it a long time. After careful analysis of the various forms of government, including the current version of the council-manager form in Wheatridge, the above recommendation seems to best fit our community, especially when evaluated against the 11 criteria that I outlined earlier. The changes recommended provide a city government which focuses strongly on citizen representation through nine elected officials without excessive power being given to just one elected official not accountable to City Council. City Council has the ability to work closely with the city manager and can address performance issues directly without having to resort to extreme measures such as a recall election. The recommended changes incorporate the mayor fully into the city's governance process as a member of council. This promotes the potential for a highly productive administration, council-working relationship. It also minimizes prospects for conflicts inherent in a form of government that separates the function of the council and the mayor into potentially competing interests. So that is our presentation, and we certainly encourage you to read it through, decide for, obviously, this is for information. You certainly have the right and authority to do what you wish with this. I want to also thank the attorney, Jerry Dahl, the city attorney. He also attended a number of our meetings and made a presentation as well. So this is the formal recommendation on part of the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Please step forward if you have any comments. Please spell your last name for the record. The clerk may not know it.
Nancy Snow, S-N-O-W. I'm the odd man out. I'm the seven to one. I'm the one.
Nancy, can you raise your mic a little bit to the...
Okay, can you hear me? First of all, I am not against the entire report. I do urge everyone on the council and everybody at home, if you can, to read the report. It's a lot of work. There's a lot of good information about the advantages and disadvantages of various forms of government, but there's three things that are in that recommendation. The first one is the evaluation of various forms of government. Again, I'm all for that. It's great. The second part of the recommendation, however, is a definite recommendation to keep the form we have now. And you can, if you're honest about this, you have to know, this is basically saying, we suggest you vote no on the two ballot proposals that are in the works right now. If you're honest, you have to know what that is. The third part is a proposal to put on the ballot, it's not clear whether that means now or later, an alternate proposal. And I want to say a little bit about myself. First of all, everybody here knows, and people at home, I was on the City Council for six years, planning commission for, I don't know how much longer. But the other thing I want to say, you may assume, since I'm saying that I don't want to go along with saying vote no on the two proposals, that I'm in favor of them. I had nothing to do with writing them, knew nothing about them. No matter how many times I was asked, I did not sign either of those two petitions, and I'm not part of any group opposing them. I have no idea how I'm going to vote when the time comes. But this is why I don't like those second proposals, second and third ones. This city has a very long history of forming committees of citizens to come up with the results they want. You know, when you want a tax increase, you get a committee together, you pick the people you want, they come back, and that's what they tell you. And it's no coincidence that this committee was formed right after these two ballot proposals were in the wind. I guess they weren't filed yet. It wasn't done in the middle of summer or some other year when somebody really thought, let's look at our government and see what it's like. And the members were picked without consulting all of the council, and I don't want to go into that, but maybe somebody on the council wishes to tell the public at home exactly what did happen. So I guess I'm suggesting to people at home, please read the report, but take the recommendation about telling you how to vote with a grain of salt. Look at all the pros and cons. But then I have another reason for objecting. We have an equally long history of interfering with petition rights in this city. You can count on it. If you file a petition, you're either going to get sued or somebody's going to file a protest. But we got a new one here, which is a proposal to write an alternative one. And if it's on the ballot, I would presume that they're all going to go down because nobody's going to figure them out. I do not think, I feel very strongly, that if this council wants to put an alternate proposal on the ballot, they should let these two, I don't know if they've been certified yet, but if they're on the ballot, go ahead and fight them. If you don't like them, everybody's entitled to fight them. But I don't think you should put another proposal on the ballot to confuse people. And believe me, it would be, especially since some parts of that second proposal, the mayor wants increased veto power, and this one is proposing to take away all veto power. I can't imagine how anybody's going to figure it out. So I'm asking, mostly I'm asking people at home to read the report. I'm asking the council, please don't put something else on the ballot so nobody knows what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dick Matthews, and I am one of the people in that petition committee that passed the two petitions. And I also would like to give a little presentation on that, if at all possible.
Does council like to waive rules, allow Mr. Matthews to speak, more than nine minutes?
Do you need more than nine minutes, Mr. Matthews?
I timed it at nine minutes.
All right. I'd move to waive the rules in any of them. I'd move to waive the rules so that Mr. Matthews can complete his presentation.
We have a motion to waive rules for the petition committee presentation, seconded by Mr. Demott. Please poll the council.
And we probably need the lights turned down because I also have a PowerPoint. Anyhow, I'll start right out with that.
Just a second, Mr. Matthews. Motion does carry eight to zero.
Thank you.
In April of 2010, two petition committees were formed by Wheatridge citizens. The goal was to initiate the petition process to place two questions on the ballots for November of 2010. And our petition committee, I don't need to read them all off, included two current members of City Council and two former members of City Council. And I am embarrassed to say that one of the members of City Council's name is egregiously misspelled, and I blame it all on my 82-year-old research assistant, and I am going to fire him. This story, okay, just joking. The two proposed ballot questions address critical issues for a more responsive city government and establish enhanced checks and balances, healthier accountability, and less bureaucracy from City Council and staff for the 21st century. It returns our city government to the more efficient mayor-council-administrator form of government with added accountability of elected officials and staff. It expands the current mayor veto on ordinances to the entire city budget or by city department and/or fund added checks and balances on tax money. We would like to acknowledge the 2,000-plus citizens, businesses, volunteers, and elected officials who have worked on this grassroots effort to bring forward these two petitions this fall. The petitions were due on Tuesday, July 6, and were delivered to the city clerk. We delivered supplemental signatures on August 6, 2010, and as of yet, we are not sure whether we are certified to go to the ballot. Are we?
Yes, you are.
We are certified to go to the ballot. Never mind, we are certified to go to the ballot. And I have on here the current and former elected officials who signed and/or carried a petition. We have two mayors and a number of members of the current and former City Council that actually have been helping with this effort. To tell you what we are trying to do is we are trying to restore the mayor-council-administer form of government that was in effect from, I believe, 1978 through 1996. At the city level, the form of government that best encourages accountability and enhanced checks and balances of elected officials and city staff is the mayor-council-administer form of government. The founding fathers of this country anticipated branches of the government that were elected and directly accountable to the citizen with separation of powers. The executive, that is the president, the governor, or the mayor, the elected legislative, congress, state legislature, or city council, and the judicial, federal courts, state district courts, and city courts. The goals and purposes of the elected branches of government is to provide for further checks and balances of government, provide accountability of government to the citizens, and provide for a representative form of government. Mayor-council-administer highlights, the mayor hires a professional city administrator to efficiently administer the daily affairs of the city. The mayor and the professional city administrator develop a budget for City Council review and approval based on the needs of the community. By charter, the mayor does not vote on adopting or amending the budget, and that will not change under the new proposal. The mayor still will not vote on the budget. The city administrator hires and fires the department heads. The mayor and the city administrator implement the policies set by City Council as a team. The city administrator is accountable to one boss, the mayor, and not eight or nine bosses, as with the inefficient council-mayor form. Time is money. It is time to implement city policies in timely and efficient manner. The City Council, the legislative branches, sets city policies and approve and amends the city budget. City Council retains the power of the purse. The City Council must approve the recommended salary and employment contract of the city administrator. There's less bureaucracy, less expensive, time is money, one boss versus eight or nine bosses, more checks and balances of the government, and more accountability to the citizens from the city and the city administrator. Some of the questions that we've heard raised is, does the city council-administer form of government diminish the powers of council? And the answer is no. Council's powers and duties are covered in section 4.7 of the City Charter, and it does not change any of those, any part of that City Charter. Does the mayor-council-administer form of government diminish the professionalism and duties of the proposed city administrator? The answer is no. The City Charter does not change the professionalism or the duty of the administrator. It changes the job title, but the job duties still remain the And I, with your indulgence, I went through there and started listing some of the duties of the city manager. And I would just like to point to, in paragraph D, "The city manager will still report to council after the proposed budget is to be prepared and submitted to the council." E includes the council. "During the month of July and as often as the council may require, prepare and submit to the council a budget status." F, prepare and submit to the council. Prepare, F, prepare and submit to the council. G, keep the council involved. L, perform other duties as may be prescribed by this charter, by ordinance, or required by council, and which are not inconsistent with this charter. Basically, the city administrator will continue to answer to council for many, many things. Council will still set all of the policy. Does the mayor-council-administer form allow the mayor to hire a friend or relative? Yeah, it does. Currently, the friend or a relative can be hired. All it requires is six votes of council. After this change, a relative could still be hired, but it requires the mayor and five members of City Council to buy onto it. Could this happen? Who would have thought Bell City, California, could ever happen? Sure, it could happen. But the cure is in the lobby, that we form the quality of our government by participation or neglect. This adds checks and balances. It reduces the chance that we will have a city administrator that is not responsive to the mayor and council. Question, as the mayor-council-administer form is passed, does the mayor get a raise or become a full-time mayor? I know for sure the mayor will not get a raise. The mayor cannot get an increase in salary during their term of office. The next mayor, perhaps, could get a The next mayor perhaps could get a raise if that's what council decides. But remember, council still has the power of the purse and still can determine the compensation level for the mayor. Will the mayor become a full-time mayor? Maybe. I think in the past, we've had mayors that were virtually full-time. They were put in probably 40 hours a week. Question, is a mayor-council-administer form of government the same as a strong mayor or boss-mayor form of government? The answer is no. There are still a few big cities left that have the strong mayor form of government. You know, Chicago with the Daley family, and actually Denver still has a strong mayor form of government. But we're not going to be a boss hog in Hazard County. Wheat Ridge can be a leader in Colorado by advocating efficient change in city government, leading by example. The executive branch of city government needs to be the mayor, who is directly accountable to the residents, not a city manager who is not accountable to the residents. The city administrator should have only one boss, mayor-council administrator, not eight or nine bosses, so he or she can get some work done. Time is money and less bureaucracy. Thank you.
Thank you. Please step forward for anything under public comment. Please state your last name for the record and state your address or your city.
My name's Cheryl Wise, and I'm W-I-S-E. And I'm a member of the Citizens Exploratory Committee, but I'm wearing, as I'm speaking right now, I'm wearing several different hats, partly as a member of the Citizens Exploratory Committee. The largest hat I'm wearing right now is as a business member of the community. And then the third hat is as a former lady council member. I just want to express, my comments are probably more directed towards the citizens who happen to be viewing this meeting this evening. In my leadership role, what I learned over the years is that citizens elect, everybody up here at this dais, to be the eyes and ears for them. They don't have the time, they don't have the energy, a lot of times they don't have the interest to study issues in depth, and they are dependent. They're trusting each and every one of you to do the homework for them and to put forth information so that they can make thoughtful, informed, quality decisions. My understanding, when I was asked to serve on this committee, is that City Council chose to put forth this committee on behalf of the citizens, because as counselors, you are carrying out the priorities and the values of the community. So therefore, my assumption as a committee member is that I was asked to serve on this and evaluate the various forms of government, because your citizens must have been asking you to do that. This must have been a priority. It must be of value to the citizens. And so I'm, right now, I'm reacting out of a sense of confusion. My understanding that this committee was asked to evaluate the various forms of government, and the agenda item tonight was for our committee to present that evaluation, or analysis of it, and the recommendation. What I just heard, what I'm confused about, we didn't come up as a committee to put forth the education, the concepts, the everything that we looked at in those various forms of government. We didn't do the schooling. I'm confused why you took our agenda item and allowed a ballot initiative to come forth and put forth that educational opportunity. I'm in agreement now with Nancy Snow that has this now turned into a one item versus another item. I didn't serve on this committee to get into, we didn't evaluate the merits of the ballot initiative. And yet, I feel like our presentation here tonight was allowed to turn into that. And as a business member, I just want the citizens out there to know that it is imperative that citizens and businesses rely upon how a government operates. Reliability is everything. In the short period of time that I've been in Wheat Ridge, it seems like the city charter is easier, as easy to change as it is to pass any city ordinance. So I just think that citizens really need to look at all of this. My personal belief, not as a committee member, but my personal belief is no law is better than a bad law. And if citizens don't have sufficient information, just take your time, vote anything down, whether it's our proposed recommendation, anything at the state level, but give yourself time to thoroughly analyze any particular law that's put forth before you, and do it with thoughtfulness, and make sure that you have the opportunity to look at all sides of an issue. Because I personally am resenting that now, the information that was presented under our presentation on the ballot initiative maybe wasn't completely accurate. And so there's no opportunity for us to debate or to present elsewhere, otherwise. Thank you very much.
Continuing on to a public comment for everybody who's in the room. Anybody like to speak on anything else under public comment before we move on to the approval of the agenda? We're back to the three minutes, too. The rules are waived for the CEC and then the presentation on the, by the petition committee, under public comment. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. My name is Bill Mahar, M-A-H-A-R, and I'm a consultant with Livewell Wheat Ridge. And I'm here tonight to encourage you to adopt the bicycle and pedestrian master plan that's on your agenda tonight. And tonight, I'm also joined by Molly Hansen, our Livewell Wheat Ridge coordinator, and two of our co-facilitators from our Active Community Environments Task Force, Ted Hyde and Greg Seebart. We would first of all really like to commend the City Council and the staff on their efforts with this plan. Livewell has provided approximately $25,000 through the completion of this plan, and we've been along, partnering with you in the process, and felt it's been a great benefit, it'll be a great benefit to the city, and we have, feel it has really reached out to the public, and we've really received good public comment on this, and will ultimately result in, you know, a plan that meets good economic development and a good planning process that will result in better health for the community. We've participated in many other meetings and, well, ultimately, as I mentioned, will help improve the health of the community and make it more attractive in the end, and led to a better economic development for the future of the community. In order to move this project moving, to help it move forward, we'd really like to encourage the city to set aside funds in your next upcoming year for the construction of a priority route identified in the plan, and that will just help keep the momentum going for this plan and lead to a walkable and bikeable community in the future. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Please state your last name for the record and state your address or your city.
Kim Calomino, C-A-L-O-M-I-N-O, 4070 Dover Street, 800. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I would like to express my appreciation to the Citizens Exploratory Committee and to the council for appointing that committee. I, too, am a little bit dismayed that the education that the exploratory committee was asked to bring forward has been juxtaposed against two potential bad, or apparently now real ballot initiatives that will be faced as a city. I think that what their efforts were focused on was providing the citizens an opportunity to learn from the research that they conducted, the thoughtful and diligent discourse that they engaged in that I tried to follow, and I would encourage all citizens, I believe it's still accessible on the website, to look, to see what they learned and what their pros and cons were, and the advantages and disadvantages of the various forms of government that they looked at. And I think as we, as citizens, consider something as significant as a change in the form of government, it is, it was appropriate of council to put forward a committee to provide the opportunity for the average citizen, such as myself, to learn what it could portend for the city. It's a big deal to change our city charter. It's a big deal to look at changes of power and checks and balances, if you want to call them that, representative voices as we as citizens look to our elected officials to represent us. It's not something to be taken lightly, and it's not, I don't think that the advisory, the exploratory committee was engaged to do anything but provide education. And I am dismayed that it's been seen as an opportunity to defeat one or another initiatives that might be on the ballot. And I tell you that as a citizen, I resent the implication that I can't make my way through three potential thoughts on a ballot. I am not confused, and if I am, I seek to resolve that confusion, and I think that you should vest your citizens with that same authority and responsibility and not assume anything about them other than that they will be voting diligently and how they would like to see their government proceed to represent them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Ted Hyde. My last name is spelled H-E-Y-D. And I am a resident of Wheat Ridge, and as Bill mentioned, a co-facilitator of the Livewell Wheat Ridge Active Community Environments Task Force, and here this evening in support of the bicycle and pedestrian master plan. As part of the task force, it's been great to be a part of this effort, and very exciting to know that the city is on this path to potential adoption of a framework that will really further bicycle and pedestrian facilities throughout the city. I've been working in urban planning for 10 years, and just on a city scale, on a neighborhood scale, really on a site scale, just want to touch on very quickly a few of the benefits arising from enhanced bicycle and pedestrian facilities. First of all, the physical. I'm sure many of you walk or do bike, and the physical benefits associated with providing your citizens, whether they be business owners, schoolteachers, kids, with bicycle and pedestrian facilities, the physical benefits are understood and terrific. Second of all, the psychological benefits that come with that. The ability to walk out your door and to bike to conduct an errand, or to bike to your work. Mental wellness is a big part of this, and that's a great benefit to community members. Third, social interaction. Your ability to go out and use a bike lane or to take a sidewalk down to the grocery store. That enables you to possibly interact with your neighbors, your friends, people you go to church with, and that provides real community benefits as well. Fourth, the environmental benefits. Getting people out of their cars for just a simple, say, half-mile trip or a quarter-mile trip, enabling them to walk with their kids or the elderly to be able to bike. Cutting down on those single-use trips and enabling people to walk and bike really does have environmental, primarily, air quality benefits. And lastly, just a sense of empowerment. To know that you can step outside your door, not far away is a bike lane that'll take you three or four miles away to your destination, whether it be the rec center or the library, city council chambers, it's a real sense of empowerment to know, eh, I don't feel like taking the car. I'm not going to use it tonight. I'm going to get on the bike. It's a beautiful night. That provides empowerment for the city's residents. Thanks very much for your attention tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks for helping out. Do we have any other body else for public comment? Please step forward.
Greg Seebart, S-E-E-B-A-R-T. Longtime resident of the city of Wheat Ridge, and just want to encourage you to adopt the bicycle pedestrian plan. It's not just such a physical thing, but it's also an economic thing for the city. The city of Minneapolis, over the last two decades, has spent $55 million on their parks, their streets, their bike paths, and their trails. That has benefited them with over $1.2 billion in private dollars that have come into their city along these parks, along these bike paths. So if the city can get behind this, put some money in, putting towards these bike paths and lanes, it could be a very great economic thing for the city. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. I just wanted to remind everybody, generally under public comment, it's reserved for any item not on the agenda. But that's fine that you spoke tonight under public comment on item seven. I'm not going to call it on that tonight. Is there any other comments for public comment before we move on to a change of the agenda? Seeing none, we need to make some changes to the agenda tonight. Councilmember Reinhardt?
I move to amend the agenda and include item number eight, resolution number four, an IGA with, forty-four, sorry, I misspoke, 2010, an item authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with Jefferson County, and to include item number nine, certification of the ballot for the citizens' petition.
Thank you. We have a motion to add item number eight and number nine. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Sang. Please poll the council on items eight and nine.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Item one is the consent agenda. Councilmember Langworthy.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Consent Agenda 1A, a resolution 39-2010 approving an intergovernmental agreement between the Jefferson County Department of Health and Environment and the city of Wheat Ridge for cooperative mosquito management program in an amount not to exceed $8,197.50. 1B, a resolution 40-2010 authorizing submission of the application for a 2011 special opportunity grant to the State Board of the Great Outdoors, Colorado, for the construction of a skateboard park in Discovery Park. 1C, resolution 42-2010 amending the fiscal year 2010 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $7,206.84 to the Department of Treasury Internal Revenue Service for the payment of 2008 employment tax examination liability. 1D, resolution 43-2010 supporting the Denver Regional Council of Governments' comprehensive joint application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Sustainable Communities Regional Planning Grant. 1E, a motion to approve renewal of RFP-07-32 towing and impound services to Conley's Towing, Inc., and a motion to approve award SOQ-10-03 on-call architectural engineering and related consulting design services. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve 1A, B, C, D, E, and F.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda, seconded by Councilmember Reinhardt. Discussion on the main motion. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public hearings and ordinances on second reading. Item two is Council Bill 14-2010. I'm going to open the public hearing. Councilmember Demont?
Thank you. Council Bill number 14-2010, an ordinance amending Articles Two and Six of Chapter 26 concerning accessory structures on properties with commercial or industrial zoning, case number 0A10-03. Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Municipal Code does not allow for any accessory building such as a storage shed or garage on properties within a commercial or industrial zone district. The proposed code amendment would allow accessory structures on such properties, subject to regulations regarding size, placement, maximum number, and design screening. The proposed amendment to the current zoning code would allow properties with commercial or industrial zoning to have accessory structures. The amendment is intended to facilitate the city's economic development efforts.
Will the city clerk please assign an ordinance number?
Yes, Council Bill 14-2010 will be assigned ordinance number 1468.
Thank you. Move on to staff presentation. Please state your name and your position with the city.
My name is Sarah Scholwalter, and I'm Planner Two.
Thank you.
I'd like to enter into the record the case file, the ordinance, and the contents of this presentation, and note that all public notification requirements have been met for the public hearing this evening. The ordinance before you tonight is pertaining to the allowance of accessory structures on commercial and industrial properties. To start with a little background, planning staff has been approached by several business owners over the past few years who own property that's zoned either commercially or industrially that would like to construct an accessory structure on their property. The most common desire is to have added room for storage. Occasionally, we've also seen desire to build something like a carport. However, our current code does not allow any form of accessory structure on a property that has a commercial or industrial zone designation. They are allowed in residential and agricultural districts, but not commercial or industrial. We do see... We do see a great need for this kind of structure throughout the city. There are several properties that have nonconforming or illegal accessory structures. Some property owners have been able to use the option to get a temporary use permit to put a temporary accessory structure on their property, but this is a short-term solution because the temporary use permits expire after one year, and they're not able to be renewed. And what we hear oftentimes is that really the only option, the code today for a permanent solution, if you want the additional storage area, is to add on to your primary building. And what we hear is that that's cost prohibitive for a lot of business owners. And in researching this ordinance, we also looked at what other jurisdictions in the metro area do, and in our study session with you, I think about six weeks ago, presented a summary of that data. But overall, we looked at 12 jurisdictions in the Denver metro area, and all of them allowed in some form for an accessory structure in a commercial or industrial district. In one case, it could only be through a plan development. But we've looked on that summary of research that there's even more reason to be looking at this issue. So based on that background information, the ordinance tonight would amend on the existing Section 2620, 204, to allow accessory structures on commercial and industrial properties. And it would also amend Section 26625, which has regulations regarding the placement and design of accessory structures. Right now, that section just deals with accessory structures for residential and agricultural districts, and we are proposing to add standards for those in commercial and industrial districts as well. In a quick summary of those proposals, there would be a size limit so that no accessory structure exceeds 50% of the floor area of the primary structure, and in no case could an accessory structure exceed 500 square feet. We are proposing a maximum of one accessory structure in commercial zone districts, and two in industrial districts. The location would need to be in the back or side of the property. It could not be at the side if the side yard is adjacent to a public right-of-way, just to keep the visible impact low. We also have, the ordinance has proposed setbacks, five feet for the side, 10 feet for the rear, a maximum height of 12 feet. The materials would need to be compatible with the primary structure that's already on the lot. However, based on study session with city council and planning commission, we did add a provision that if the accessory structure is smaller, 120 square feet or less, you could make it of materials that do not match the primary structure, with the only restriction being that it could not be metal. We do also have a provision in industrial districts only to use storage units or shipping containers as the accessory structure, and this would be for, in industrial districts, two could be allowed. And I did want to note, action form, the note said up to one, which was incorrect, the ordinance is for two. The stated requirement for these would be that they would have to be screened by a wall or opaque fence that is at least as tall as the storage unit.
Sarah, do you mind if we maybe replace the battery in that? Do you have a battery, Mr. Stone? You're fading in and out, and we wouldn't want that to happen. This is riveting material.
Okay, hopefully this will work a little better.
Thank you for, sorry for interrupting.
No problem. And we just have one more slide here. Just in conclusion, we think that this proposed ordinance encourages investment in commercial properties, and it's consistent with the goals in our comprehensive plan to retain businesses and promote economic development in the city. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We'll move on to public comment and come back for questions. Is there anybody here for the public to speak on item number two tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to council questions and discussion. Ms. Berry?
Over the last few years, the most calls that I've gotten from businesses is on this issue. One business in particular on 38th Avenue couldn't store a snow blower on their property because they had a brick building, and they were going to have to build a brick addition to their building to be able to store their snow blower to clear sidewalks. So I don't think we ever really intended it to be that onerous. So I want to thank staff for putting this together and making sure that, you know, we do protect visual impact of residential neighborhoods, but that we have some flexibility to allow businesses to do what they need to do. Thank you.
Councilmember Langworthy?
Yes, I have just a couple of questions. On the addition, under, I guess, D, the accessory building standards for commercial and industrial zone districts, under C where it has the materials, accessory structures, and that's where you address the 120 square foot or less, and it doesn't have to be, but then you have in, on number two, on industrial zone properties, only one or both of the allowable accessory structures may be industrial shipping containers? That's with the implication that on that property, there's a primary building, correct? That's not saying that they can have zoned industrial and put up two shipping containers. They would still need to have a primary building.
Right. Generally speaking, you can't have an accessory use unless you've already established a principal use. There is one somewhat caveat to that in industrial districts. You can have a building contractors or an outdoor storage yard, which you could have two of these units and other outdoor storage materials, subject to certain screening requirements and landscape requirements, and subject to approval as a special use permit.
Okay. I just want to, I mean, I know that that's another concern some people have. I don't want them to erroneously believe that this gives them that right. I would, you know, I don't want to put somebody in a bad position, you know? So I just want to clarify that. And then, as far as the maximum number that are allowed as an accessory use in the, like the commercial and industrial zone, if they already have a structure that they've kind of, I mean, some people have them, and they're nonconforming, this kind of eases them into more of a conforming, as long as they're in these guidelines, correct?
And subject to a permit requirement.
So if they already have it there, and they weren't supposed to, they still need to come in and get the permit so that we can make them conforming?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions from council before I close the public hearing? Mr. Stites?
Thank you. This one gives me a warm and fuzzy feeling. But I'd like to thank staff for bringing this forward. It shows the flexibility that we've been preaching all along, because if we're going to achieve what we need to achieve in Wheat Ridge, we're going to have to have flexibility. So I thank you for that.
Any other comments before I close the public hearing? Close the public hearing, and a motion's in order.
Thank you. I move to approve Council Bill number 14-2010, case number ZOA 10-03, an ordinance amending Chapter 26 of the Code of Laws concerning accessory structures on properties with commercial or industrial zoning on second reading, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Sang. Discussion on the main motion. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is items 3A and 3B, resolution 37-2010, and 3B, Council Bill 12-2010. Councilmember Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce 3A and 3B, resolution number 37-2010, and Council Bill number 12-2010, a resolution making findings of fact regarding a petition for annexation of two remnant parcels of right-of-way located in the east half of Section 16, Township Three, south range 69, west of the Sixth Principal Meridian, County of Jefferson, State of Colorado, and an ordinance approving the annexation case number ANX 1002, City of Wheat Ridge.
I'll open the public hearing, and would the city clerk please assign an ordinance number?
Sorry, I'll have to pause my place here for one moment here. Yes, Council Bill 12-2010 will be assigned ordinance number 1469.
I thank you, and I need to swear everybody in. If you're here to speak on item 3A or B, please stand and raise your right hand. I guess you're it, Meredith. Do you swear to tell the truth in this matter?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, Meredith Reckert, Wheat Ridge Community Development. Do we need to read an executive summary? Okay. Again, this is related to items 3A and 3B, which are resolution 37-2010 and Council Bill 12-2010, and they are both related to a public, the petition for annexation for two remnant parcels of right-of-way in the vicinity of 50th and Kipling. This is actually an aerial photo showing the two annexation parcels. Just to help orient you, 50th Avenue runs along the south. We've got Kipling Street over here on the east side, and then Miller on the west. The greenish area in the overhead is actually the city of Arvada. You can see the black dotted city limit line. Of course, the rest of this surrounding area is city of Wheat Ridge. The property currently, believe it or not, is located in unincorporated Jefferson County, and it does contain the right-of-way improvements for Kipling and 50th Avenue built upon the Arvada Ridge construction, the Target Center. Combined, the parcels equal about 7/10 of an acre. The right-of-way is currently owned and maintained by the city of Wheat Ridge, but is located in Jefferson County. And again, the property is abutted by the city of Arvada on the north and west, and the city of Wheat Ridge on the south and east, and the IGA with the city of Arvada obligated the city of Wheat Ridge to annex upon completion of the Arvada Ridge development. Just a couple of quick slides. This first slide is standing at the, on 50th Avenue on the south side, looking towards the existing intersection and the entrance into the Arvada Ridge development. And like I say, this is the location of where one of the parcels is located. And here, I'm standing along Kipling. The Arvada Ridge Center is off on the left-hand side. I'm looking north along Kipling, and it's this XL/DSL lane that is part of the annexation. And then this is looking south, so this is the same situation. There are two pages of the annexation map. The first one is the declaration page, which contains the legal description and all the correct signature blocks and so on. This is actually the second page of the plat, a little bit hard to read. Kipling, this time, is on the top with north on the left-hand side. And again, I pointed out those annexation parcels, which is the Kipling piece right here, and then the little intersection triangle. Staff findings, we've determined that the 1/6 contingency has been met, that the petitioner represents more than 50% of the land being annexed, that the area is surrounded by urban development and can be integrated with the city of Wheat Ridge. Therefore, we've concluded it does meet the eligibility requirements. All taxing entities have been notified of the annexation with no concerns, and finally that the action tonight will fulfill the IGA obligation with the city of Arvada. That does conclude the staff report. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Move on to public comment. Do we have anybody here to speak on item 3A or 3B tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to council questions and discussion. Do you have any questions for council? Councilmember Langworthy?
I have a quick question, and you probably addressed. On the Kipling side, the acceleration, D acceleration lane, do we plow that already?
I will. And Tim is nodding his said yes.
So this just kind of makes it?
It's more of a housekeeping measure, really, just to make sure that we've got the right-of-way in the city of Wheat Ridge since we maintain and own it.
We already maintain it.
Yes.
Because I know that the rest of Kipling is a highway, a state highway, so that's...
The state highway actually starts at the interstate, or at the front end.
So that part of Kipling is all ours?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments before I close the public hearing? Close the public hearing, and a motion's in order.
I move to adopt resolution number 37-2010, a resolution making findings of fact regarding a proposed annexation as being in substantial compliance with CRS 3112-1071, and eligible for annexation to the city of Wheat Ridge.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Langworthy. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you.
Then I shall move to approve Council Bill number 12-2010, an ordinance approving an annexation to the city of Wheat Ridge on second reading, and that it take effect upon recordation of the annexation ordinance and map of the area annexed with Jefferson County Clerk and Recorder as provided by CRS 31113.
Sarah, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Langworthy. Discussion on the main motion. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Item four is a public hearing considering a motion establishing a business development zone district, known as a senior resource center, business center development zone, and two, approving an agreement to participate in said zone in conjunction therewith. So I'm going to open the public hearing. Councilmember Berry?
On June 11, 2010, the city received a request from the seniors resource center to refund certain building permit fees and use tax that will be charged by the city in association with an upcoming expansion of their facility at 3227 Chase Street. The project is estimated to include $3.8 million in construction costs and generate significant permanent jobs and temporary jobs during construction. The expanded facility will also provide expanded services for seniors related to transportation, adult daycare, and job training. The construction project is estimated to generate $101,780 in use tax, permit fees, and plan review fees. The applicant has requested a 100% rebate of those taxes and fees. City council is authorized to refund up to 100% of said taxes and fees through approval of an agreement and an established business development zone. City council would first need to take action to establish a business development zone, and second, to approve an agreement with the seniors resource center. The construction cost at $3.8 million, where did you sit that? Code of laws, Chapter 22, Article 1, Division 5 establishes an economic development tool known as the Business Development Zone Program. The goal of the program is to encourage the development of private sector jobs, revitalize the tearing areas of the city, and encourage the development, redevelopment, and expansion of businesses within the city. This tool allows the city council to waive certain building permit fees and building use taxes in association with construction projects that occur in established business development zones. The tool is intended to be used to refund fees and taxes for projects that have the potential to generate additional sales tax and use tax, or that more generally provide substantial public benefit to the city. Staff has evaluated the application criteria as follows. The amount of expected incremental future sales tax and use tax, which can reasonably be generated to be derived by the city through the expanded or new tax generating businesses. The senior resource center will not directly generate future sales and use taxes. However, as discussed, the expansion does have the potential to generate spillover sales and use taxes based upon the following construction payroll of $2.6 million, increase in annual senior resource center payroll of $324,470, and increased traffic and activity on their expanded facility. Public benefits which are provided by the applicant through public works, public improvements, additional employment for city residents. The employment will be expanded on a permanent basis and more second effluent during the period of construction. The project also provides onsite stormwater detention and stormwater quality features, which help improve the stormwater drainage for the surrounding area. The amount of any city expenditures which may be deferred based upon public improvements to be completed by the applicant. The project does not trigger a need for additional public improvements, either on or off-site, other than onsite stormwater facilities. The conformance of the applicant's property or project with the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance is the city. In vision, Wheat Ridge strongly encourages reinvestment in areas of the city that are considered neighborhood revitalization areas. These areas are not mapped, but are defined as areas that exhibit characteristics as higher crime rates, lower rates of homeownership, infrastructure needs, and increasing maintenance problems. This part of the city exhibits some of these characteristics. Reinvestment and redevelopment is strongly encouraged in these areas, and the proposed investment will represent a significant asset for this area. The agreement required by Section 2294 having been reached, which agreement shall contain and conform to all the requirements of each section. The city attorney's office has drafted... The city attorney's office has drafted an agreement in compliance. The investment proposed by the Senior Resource Center will have significant positive impacts for the community, both economically and their ability to provide services. As analyzed above, the application is in compliance with the majority of the criteria that are to be used by city council in reviewing the application. This is a significant investment in a revitalizing area of the town and will provide increased services to the Wheat Ridge senior population. The one evaluation criteria that was not met related to the generation of future sales tax and use tax. As the Senior Resource Center is a nonprofit, it does not directly generate sales and use tax. However, there anticipated sales and use tax benefit based on potential spillover impacts of the property. Staff would also note that the co-provides the following. The city council may, by three-fourth majority, approve exceptions to the provisions of this division when such exceptions are found to be in the public's interest, and such exemptions provide substantial benefit to the city. In making a motion, the city should designate a fixed proportion of fees to be waived through the agreement. And there's 25% would be $25,569. 50% would be $51,139.74. A 75% fee refund would be $76,709.61. And a 100% fee, of course, would be $102,279.48.
Move on to the staff presentation. Mr. Johnstone?
Thank you, Mayor. Ken Johnstone, Community Development Director. Thank you for the thorough summary. I really don't have a whole lot to add to that. I realize this is somewhat of a new program for city council. This is, to my knowledge, the first application that you've reviewed and zoned that you've established under the Business Development Zone that's in Chapter 22, Division 5 of the Code of Laws. So if you have any substantive questions about how the program works, or how it applies to this specific application from the Senior Resource Center, we'd certainly be glad to entertain those.
Thank you. We'll move on to public comment on this item four. So if you're here to speak on item four, please step forward and spell your last name for the record and your address, and then we'll come back to council questions and discussion after the public comment like we always do.
Thank you, Mayor and council. My name is Dave Bandemere, B as in boy, A and D, I M E R E, 3250 Benton. And I'm here to really speak on behalf of our entire family. We've been in this neighborhood since 1938, and we currently have six properties that are within one to three blocks of the Senior Resource Center. And we very much, as a family and a group, value what they do. We think they're a critical, important part of our community and appreciate them, and they've been a great neighbor. And we would like to encourage you to waive the fees regarding building permits and the sales use tax, and give them every opportunity to provide the critical and valuable service that they give to our community. And thank you for the privilege to address this with you.
Thank you. Do we have the applicant to speak tonight? Please spell your last name for the record, John, and your address, and or city.
My name is John Zabawa, Z-A-B-A-W-A. I'm president and CEO of the Senior Resource Center, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Senior Resource Center, mayor, and members of city council. You know, the Senior Resource Center Board of Directors made a conscious decision in 2006 to really invest in this property at 32nd and Chase. And going hand in hand with that, we got the support of Jefferson County Commissioners to deed the property over to us. And then we had the opportunity to acquire the adjacent parcel at 3281 Chase Street, allowing us then the opportunity to expand upon our facilities. As we all know, you know, our population is aging, and the Senior Resource Center is really positioning itself to be able to address not only the current needs but the future needs of our older population. And we also, I think, all want to stay at home and remain in the community for as long as possible. I think we have a wonderful opportunity to work in partnership, to develop a model of care that has really received national recognition. And I certainly appreciate your serious consideration of approving the waiving of the use tax fees and also the permit fees. You know, this has not been an easy road. For the last four years, we have engaged the community fully in order to provide financial support, in-kind support, to make this endeavor become a reality. You have the opportunity tonight to really help us see this through to the end. At this point, we have raised about 97% of the funds that will be required to begin construction on the 17,000-square-foot, design-built, state-of-the-art, adult-day center, something that we can be proud of as a community to have, not only for Wheat Ridge residents, Jefferson County residents, but throughout the metropolitan area. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else to speak on item four before a motion's made? Please spell your last name for the record, Bob.
My name is Bob Timm, T-I-M-M, and I'm on staff with Senior's Resource Center. I'm in charge of the fundraising effort, and I just wanted to make a pitch to approve the maximum amount for this from a fundraising standpoint, and to remind the city that back in June 2008, you did make a financial commitment to this program in the amount of $50,000. One of the things that Senior's Resource Center has been able to do is leverage our nonprofit status around the community and generate funds from all over, and including our leadership in the nonprofit community. And we recently got a $25,000 gift from the city of Lakewood to go into this building, too. So I'd just like to encourage maximum participation.
Thank you. Move on to council question discussion. I want to close the public hearing, and a motion's in order. There's two motions.
I move to designate Lot 1, Block 1, Senior Resource Center subdivision plat of Business Development Zone pursuant to Code, Section 22, Division 5.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Reinhardt. Discussion on the main motion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Motion two?
I move to approve an agreement to participate with the Senior's Resource Center under the terms of the city's Business Development Zone Program and set the amount of the refund of eligible fees and taxes at 50%.
Second.
You have a motion for approval with 50% of fees. Discussion on the main motion? Mr. Demott?
I'd like to make a substitute motion. I move to approve an agreement to participate with the Senior Resource Center under the terms of the city's Business Development Zone Program and set the amount of the refund of the eligible fees and taxes at 100%.
Do you have a second on that?
Second.
Can we have a substitute motion? If this passes, we'll have to vote twice on the same motion for 100% of refund. Discussion on the main motion, substitute motion?
I'm sorry, could you walk me through the, how the vote's going to run on this?
Okay. We had a motion by Councilmember Berry, which was a 50%, which is fine. A substitute motion is like an amendment, so Councilmember Demott made the same motion at 100%. So if this passes, if Councilmember Demott's motion passes, we have to vote again on it because it's like an amendment. If it fails, we're back to Councilmember Berry's motion.
So we have now discussion on the amendment?
Yeah, now discussion on 100%.
On 100%. I have reservations for two reasons on going to the 100%. Reservation number one is there's a certain amount of work associated with moving forward on these permits and fees, and I don't think we should be going backwards to support this facility being built. My second reservation goes to the fact that this fails the final test and that we're not going to be generating any additional revenue, which might have led me to support an 100% fee refund. But in absence of some revenue benefit coming out of this down the road, I would, I'm in favor of supporting it. I think the facility's great, but I think we need to make sure that we've been able to support our own costs associated with their moving forward. So I'll be opposing the amendment or this second substitute resolution.
I, just the way I see it, I feel it's not costing the city anything. I know there's been a lot of work done, but like they said, it's been going since 2006. The Senior Resource Center's put a ton of work into this, and they're, you know, the value to the community isn't even measurable in revenue, to me. I would put 100% and then some, if that were even possible.
Ms. Tang?
If they weren't going forward with this, there wouldn't be any application to do this expansion or a new building, and we wouldn't be getting the fees anyway. So I think 100% is the right decision.
Any discussion, Councilmember Langworthy?
I'm 100% for the Senior Resource Center. I think it's a fabulous feature that we have in our city. It could be anywhere. It could be in Lakewood, it could be in Arvada or Golden, but it's not, it's here. And because of that, our citizens have an advantage over other citizens. They don't have to travel quite as far to use their services. They don't have to, it's just a little easier for them to take part in this. And I think that because of that, we should be given a little more. We should, I think we should give the 100%. It's not, looking at the numbers, it's not a great expense to the city. Staff estimates a minimum of approximately $10,000. That's not a lot, I mean, that's not a small amount of money for most of us, but considering the in-benefit to those citizens who live in Wheat Ridge, who use the service, and will really enjoy the additional space and abilities that they have, I would support the 100%.
Discussion on the main motion at 100% before I poll the council? Poll the council, please.
Motion carries six to two with council members Berry and Reinhardt voting no.
Now we're voting on the same motion at 100% as amended, so we're voting on the same motion at 100%. So please poll the council on that main motion at 100% still.
Motion carries six to two with council members Berry and Reinhardt voting no.
Thank you. Congratulations. Item five was considered a decision, resolution, or motion. It's actually a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing. Resolution 38-2010, Councilmember Berry?
The applicant, the Senior's Resource Center, is requesting approval of a 28-lot consolidation plat for property zoned R1C located at 3227 Chase Street. The purpose of the request is to combine individual parcels, combining the site to allow for expansion of the existing building and installation of site improvements. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this request at a public hearing held on July 15, 2010. Because this involves consolidation of more than five parcels, city council has final authority for approval.
Move on to staff presentation, please. State your name and your position with the city.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, Meredith Reckert, Wheat Ridge Community Development Department, senior planner. Again, the request is for 3227 Chase for approval of a 28-lot consolidation plat. I'd like to enter into the record the subdivision regulations, zoning ordinance, case file, and pack of materials, and the contents of this digital presentation. The property is within the city, and all proper noticing requirements have been met. Therefore, council does have jurisdiction to hear this case. This is an aerial photo of the site. You can see it's outlined in red and has a rather irregular pattern. The Senior Resource Center is a private nonprofit corporation that provides a wide range of services to seniors in the community, not only Wheat Ridge but also the region.
I'm Meredith. I need to swear everybody in because this is quadijudicial, so if you're planning on speaking, item number five, please stand and raise your right hand, and I'll swear you in. You swear to tell the truth in this matter? Thank you.
Do you want me to start over?
No, no.
Okay, I apologize. Where was I? The applicant has indicated that in order to meet the increasing demand for their services that this expansion is necessary, and more particularly to be able to expand the adult daycare program, about doubling the capacity. The property is about 2.1 acres and is mounted by 32nd Avenue down here on the south. Chase Street is over to the east, and Depew Street on the west. The property currently has the SRC facility on it attached to the Wheat Ridge Library. SRC building is this, and the library is over on the western side with a second-story This is an interesting aerial photo because you can see that in 1890, when they platted the property, it was done in 25-foot lots. And because of that, those lines you're seeing that cross the property are the platted lots approved as part of the Columbia Heights subdivision. And in order to facilitate the building expansion, of course, we need to consolidate all those individual lots. So that's the purpose for the request. This is a copy of the zoning map. Again, property outlined in yellow. There's a variety of zoning in the area, but primarily R1C, R3 with neighboring land uses, including single-family homes, apartments, and then some limited commercial. I would point out that this little enclave of land that is not included is a city-owned facility called the Yeol Firehouse. And again, zoning on the entirety of the property is R1C, and the Senior Resource Center is a use by right in that zone district. Briefly, some slides. This is a little bit blurry, but taken from the south side of 32nd Avenue looking north, the Wheat Ridge branch of the public library right here with the Senior Resource Center on the right-hand side. This is a little bit better photo. Again, library over here, the Senior Resource Center to the east. This is looking up Chase Street. You can see the old facade of the existing building. And it was, of course, built as the Columbia Heights School in 1930, and then an adaptive reuse of that structure. This is also looking west from Chase at one of the more recent additions. And this is the piece that Mr. Zabawa referred to, which is part of their expansion property to the north. This is the alley that comes south from 32nd Avenue into the property, dead ends at the north property line. Now I'm standing in the rear looking south. Again, this is that second-story connection, the library over on the west side, Senior Resource Center on the east, existing parking, access from Depew Street. This is also a shot from Depew looking east. This is the old Firehouse City Community Building, and this is the location of the new access point generally. And looking south on Depew, Senior Resource Center is off to the left-hand side of the picture. The plat that you're reviewing tonight is two pages. This is the cover sheet of the plat. It's pretty typical, has the legal description and all the proper certification blocks. There's also been some notations included on this front sheet regarding stormwater quality ponds and easement language that we typically associate with any sort of plat document. This is the second sheet, and again, you can see how the property is made up of the 28 individual lots. They have included drainage easement on the plat, which is consistent with the drainage report that was reviewed and approved by Public Works. There is also an access easement coming from the alley for the city to maintain the alley with snow removal. No right-of-way is needed for any of the adjacent streets, and staff does conclude that the proposed consolidation plat is consistent with Article 4, the subdivision regulations of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws.
Thank you.
One more, two more. All agencies can serve the property. Public Works has reviewed and approved the plat and also the drainage report, and Planning Commission reviewed this, gave a recommendation of approval with one condition, and they have corrected that. And we are supporting this application. That would conclude staff report.
Thank you. Applicants, have any questions or comments on the applicant? Move on to public comment. Do we have anybody here to speak on item number five tonight? Move on to public comment. Do you have anybody here to speak on item number five tonight? Move on to council questions and discussion before I close the public hearing. Councilmember Langworthy?
I just have a quick question about this picture.
Sure.
The, the lines, when you impose them onto here, the red lines don't correspond with several of the, is that going to be a problem?
The G, the G, no, it's not. The, the GIS layer that we took from Jefferson County is a little bit off. Um, generally, the red line corresponds with the correct plat line, I guess, if you will.
I just want to clarify because when you look at it, it looks like it wouldn't, and I don't want somebody to, I don't want to have it perceived that we have it.
That's a great question. Thanks.
Councilmember Berry?
When you said plat, I guess, I just want to clarify. It, it's, you have a, um, you probably looked like you have a projection issue. You're not splitting any lots.
We are not splitting any lots.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Adams?
Thanks. Um, Meredith, help me a little bit with the people that came in. There was some access issues with fire department. Can you let me know if those were? I watched it on, on Channel Eight and viewed it to try to see, and then during the public hearing part, um, one of the concerns of the gentleman was in the back, and he didn't get asked to come to the podium, and I don't understand what those concerns were about fire access and helping.
Right, and that was, there was some confusion in the way the report was written. I actually had made a mistake in the report.
Okay.
Um, the Wheat Ridge Fire Department has, uh, reviewed this and concluded that everything is copacetic for their needs. Um, the actual access issue was for the city for snow removal. So, that was, that was a problem in my staff report.
And that's been resolved then?
It has been resolved. Um, a lot of the comment the night of the public hearing in front of Planning Commission was due to the fact that there is a new access point being, uh, proposed on Depew Street. It does meet the standards in the city code.
It does meet the standards, even though there is some objection in the community to traffic issues.
Correct.
We've resolved that in the best we can.
The best we can, thank you.
Okay. I have nothing else. Thank you.
Any other questions from council before I close the public hearing? Ms. Berry?
I'm sorry, I, I didn't get a, a plat, so this question might be kind of answered on the plat, but that's okay. Um, I try to save paper so I get the, uh,
Oh, electronic.
Agenda electronically, but you can't send over a twenty-four-by-thirty-six document. And I usually get those by paper, but anyway. We're going to do some onsite detention here, and maybe I'll, I'll back up and talk a, a little bit about why I'm going to ask this question is, in the past, we had, um, someone come in and ask for a rezoning to allow a duplex, um, and they could not rebuild. The house was so damaged structurally, it had to be, um, torn down. And, uh, according to the applicant at that time, because the, um, expanses soils were so bad, they were going to have to rebuild the house, like on a pure foundation, um, which was very expensive, and they couldn't afford to, and that's why they needed to go to a, um, a duplex. And so, we're going to, we're going to detain, um, flows now in that area where, um, there used to be the house in the northern part of the site. So, my question is, are we only looking at runoff from this facility, or are they going to capture some off-site flows? Um, how much water might be detained in that area?
Tim Peranto, Public Works. The, uh, proposed detention pond will provide some detention for runoff from this particular site only. It will decrease the total flow, uh, in the basin. It'll slow some of the flow in the basin by detaining it, uh, and will prevent some flooding downstream, some minimal amount of flooding downstream because of this work.
Yeah. Um, I guess, it doesn't look to me from the size of the area that there's going to be that much water retained for that long. The concern would be how it might impact adjacent properties, but, um, given the size of the site, I, I don't think it's going to be that much water. So, thank you.
Close the public hearing. A motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution thirty-eight, two thousand and ten, a resolution approving a twenty-eight lot consolidation plat on property zoned R1C located at thirty-two twenty-seven Chase Street, corresponding to case number WS ten zero one for the Senior's Resource Center.
Second.
I thought there was some suggested amendments on here, one, two, with the following condition? Option A, is that what you're recommending, Meredith?
There would be no conditions attached to the recommended motion.
Well, that's the Planning Commission. Okay. Okay. We're good? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Please pull the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Now, we're on to decisions, resolutions, and motions. Item six is Resolution forty-one dash two thousand and ten. Councilmember Demott?
Thank you. A resolution submitting a ballot question to the registered electors of the city concerning citywide residential trash removal, whereas multiple trash trucks in residential neighborhoods cause premature damage to streets and infrastructure, which requires tax dollars to repair, and whereas multiple trash trucks in residential neighborhoods contribute to added noise and air pollution, and whereas the city of, the Wheat Ridge City Council desires the best price and customer service to, for citizens with regards to residential trash removal, including recycling, within the city of Wheat Ridge, and whereas this Wheat Ridge City Council wishes to determine whether citizens support citywide residential trash removal, including recycling, in the form of a franchise or franchises, and whereas the Wheat Ridge Home Rule Charter requires a vote of the electorate to approve the granting of a franchise, and whereas if the electorate of the city authorizes the grant of a franchise for residential trash removal, including recycling, the council intends to obtain the most favorable terms for the same, including price and schedule. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the Wheat Ridge City Council. Section one, the city council hereby submits and refers the following ballot question to the registered electors of the city at the November second, two thousand and ten general election. Ballot question number to be determined? Shall the city council of the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado be authorized to enter into a franchise or franchises for citywide residential trash removal, including recycling, and a senior discount for single-family and duplex zone districts?
So, motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution number forty-one dash two thousand and ten, a resolution submitting a ballot question to the registered electors of the city concerning citywide residential trash removal.
Is there a second? You have a motion for approval. It's taken by Councilmember Sang. We'll go on to public comment. Do we have anybody here to speak on item number six? Move on to council questions and discussion.
Mr. Bear?
Ms. Jay?
Um, I am, have been, uh, very vocal about my desiring this, uh, this program, this possibility of a franchise. Uh, I want, I realize this is first reading, but I want to make sure that as we bring it to the public, we have thoroughly examined this as to far, as to whether, um, uh, the recycling will be included. Is it a beneficial program? Is, are all, have all the, the possibilities been reviewed as to how it will work, how it won't work, because I know in some cities, it's, it's created a lot of difficulty. Um, I, and I favor this, um, motion, uh, but I, I just want to make sure that when it comes before the public, that it is very well-written.
Uh, Ms. Jay, this is it. This is not a first and second reading. This is a resolution. So, tonight's, tonight's it.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions before we pull the council? Councilmember Adams?
I probably have had as many calls on this as, as any other things that have come forward, and feel like, um, I don't have a lot of the answers yet, and I can get those answers, I'm sure, from Mr. Peranto. Um, I think, I fear that because of the number of questions that I have, that the community, I don't know. I think we have to do some education. I, I want to put it on the ballot, and I favor this, but I think we're going to need some good talking points with questions that keep coming up, at least to me, and I can at least get those, I guess, from Mr. Peranto, who's done a PowerPoint on this, so I'll be able to adequately answer. When we say a senior discount, um, they want to know how much, and I'm going, "I don't know, because I don't know." So, those are the types of questions. I don't want to go with a percentage or that kind of thing. So, Tim, I guess I'll bring my questions to you, or send my community questions to you. And then another thing that comes up is I spoke with a city that has placed this, um, in their, um, type of a thing where it's handled, and the billing's not handled by the city, but it hasn't prevented the city from getting a lot of phone calls. So, I think we need to look into account, if and when this does pass, that we will need some staff's time and some telephone time, even though supposedly, if I'm understanding correct, Tim, and I'll allow you to answer that too in a minute, um, that we're going to get calls. I mean, wouldn't that be your assumption? So, I'll let you answer those two questions, even if it's not our billing.
The, uh, ballot issue is going to allow you as the city council to put together a franchise with one or more vendors. So, it's the first step. And so, if it passes, then I'm sure that, uh, you'll direct staff to prepare a proposal that would go out to vendors, to trash haulers. And I anticipate that there would be at least two, if not more, uh, study sessions with city council to discuss all of the types of things that you may or may not want in that proposal, the, the issues that you want to make sure are addressed with the franchise, with this contract. Speaking to things like a, a senior discount, that's something that you in the proposal, request for proposals, would, would be asking for, and of course, whatever that senior discount might be, of course, will temper the, the cost of service to other customers as, as you all might, might imagine. So, all those sorts of things will come up, I would guess, early in two thousand and eleven, as we start to work on a, a proposal, request for proposals. Ultimately, we'll end up shortlisting vendors, interviewing vendors, and then negotiating contracts that would be brought back to you as the city council for, uh, final approval. I anticipate that we wouldn't have contracts in place until, uh, mid to late two thousand and eleven, and because this is such a large project, whatever vendors were selected are going to take, uh, need some time to order, uh, trash bins, et cetera, because we'll be providing new trash bins, I'm sure, to everybody in town, and there'd be at least two, one for trash and then another for recyclables. So, uh, I think that the public needs to know that by voting in November, that, uh, to put a system in place is going to take, uh, some major time to have a, to have a, uh, service for our citizens.
Thanks, Tim. That helps. And, uh, it doesn't have to be, I, council will be able to decide if it's one, two, three, four vend, I mean, four vendors that they're asking about. I know at the night at the meeting, um, Jerry, you said, "Well, we could split it two ways, or three ways, or four ways," so.
Well, based on?
What council, so those questions we'll be able to answer and hopefully come to consensus if this passes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much. That helps.
Yeah, really, this is just the first step to allow that process to take place.
Um, I, thank you too, because that's, I, I was concerned as, you know, the details weren't here, and I, and I realized putting it on the ballot is the first step, but it's an important one.
Ms. Berry?
Well, for me trying to do the, um, um, reduction of the consolidation of trash services is, is somewhat of a no-brainer in that it saves roads. Um, I am concerned that we give smaller businesses a fair share in being able to, to, uh, get some business, because there's some really small dedicated, um, trash haulers too. My biggest concern with this right now is even at the meeting we had, there were tons of questions we can't answer. We didn't have any detail, and it's sort of a chicken and an egg thing. I would have preferred on this that we had spent some time with the community, um, sorting through these issues so that in this franchise, we'd have a little more detail. I mean, there were a lot of questions we couldn't answer. Um, for example, one person who has a, a large animal, and they pick up their manure waste, and he's saying, "Well, you know, my trash hauler does that for me. A smaller company, would a larger one do that? Would I have to, um, what would I have to do?" And then there were some folks that didn't want to pay for other people's recycling, and some folks wanted recycling. So, I know in looking at other communities, especially like Golden, they went through a really long, um, citizen involvement process to work out what was going to be in their, their trash utility and what wasn't going to be, and it was a very spirited discussion. I mean, um, in following some of that, there were questions that I never thought of. So, and point, my fear here, without going through some of that, is putting this to the ballot with a lot of, without a lot of detail, um, people aren't going to know what they're voting on, and, um, we may be, you know, putting a cloud over this, which if we spent some time looking at it, um, we could have a much more fleshed-out, um, community-involved process to, to put on the ballot, and that's my, my biggest concern with this.
Ms. Tang?
Well, to my knowledge, this issue has been around for at least twenty years, and it's always been put on the back burner, and I think that if you go into, to a long process, the citizens out there are aware of this. A lot of them have called me and, and talked to me about it and how it needs to be done. They talked to me when I was a clerk, telling me how it needs to be done. So, I think that to go into a long process is just doing what we have been accused of doing by the public, is just discussing stuff to death, and that they want us to actually act and do things. So, I think the time is right, and I think that we'll either get a yes or no from the voters and, and let the chips fall where they may. Thank you.
I wanted to thank Tim for working on the PowerPoint presentation with me, and, and basically at the town meeting, Tim, I believe all the questions were answered, and a lot of those answers were, "Well, if this passes, the next step is, is negotiations through the bid process and the RFP, and we'll hear from citizens at that point also." So, thanks for all your work at the town meeting and answering all the questions that came up. So, we have a motion for approval of seconded. Please pull the council on the main motion.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Item seven is a bicycle and ped master plan. Councilmember Langworthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, a motion to approve bicycle and pedestrian master plan phase two. The bicycle and pedestrian master plan phase two study is now complete and offered for approval. The plan identifies proposed pedestrian and bicycle facilities along the proposed routes and establishes priorities for the development of the bike and pedestrian system. If approved by city council, the master plan will be used in making street planning and decision, and design decisions. Is, um, motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve the bicycle and pedestrian master plan phase two, two study.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion for approval, taken by Councilmember Demott. Uh, we did have some folks speak earlier under public comment for item seven. Do you wish to speak again? Do we have any council dis questions, uh, council questions or, Mr. Stites?
Yeah. Tim, now, on the, the major map, I, you know, we took it through that study session that time or whatever. Now, that does not show Lena Goldsch on Louise Turner and Ernestine Williams' property, does it?
No, it does not.
Okay. I just want to make that absolutely clear, that, that no time will that happen on Lena Goldsch because of certain.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions before we pull the council?
I don't have a question, but I would, we, I really support this. Um, this is a great addition to the bike plan that we already have in place, and it's really great for our city.
Ms. Berry?
I just want to thank, uh, the, the active, um, citizens task force in Livewell Wheat Ridge. They've really done, uh, a, a great job of bringing citizens to the table for input on this plan and, and to staff, and they provided the funding for us to allow us to go forward with this, and so it's been a, a great partnership, and Livewell Wheat Ridge has invested a lot of, um, monies and resources into, to Wheat Ridge, and I really appreciate their partnership and support.
You have a motion for approval. It was seconded. Please pull the council. Please pull the council for item seven.
Mr. Mayor, I didn't hear a second. Who is the seconding?
Mr. DeMott.
Okay, thanks.
So please pull the council on item seven.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Item eight is Resolution 44. Councilmember Reinhardt?
I'd like to introduce Resolution 44-2010, authorizing the appropriate city officials to execute an intergovernmental agreement by and between the county of Jefferson County, Colorado, and the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, regarding the administration of their respective duties concerning the conduct of the coordinated election to be held on November 2, 2010. The city of Wheat Ridge will participate in a coordinated election with Jefferson County on November 2, 2010. To accomplish that, an intergovernmental agreement is required and provided for council to take action on tonight. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I recommend to approve Resolution Number 44-2010, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the county of Jefferson County regarding the administration of respective duties concerning the conduct of the coordinated election to be held on November 2, 2010.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Langworthy. Please pull the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Item nine is ballot questions by citizen petition. Councilmember Sang?
Do you want me to read what, the memorandum from the city attorney first?
Up to you.
Since we have had confirmation this evening that the ballot, the initiatives for ballot titles for the November 2 election have been certified, we've been told by our city attorney that council must set ballot titles for all Wheat Ridge questions appearing on the November 2, 2010. Ballot prior to September the 3, 2010, the titles for the two citizen-initiated charter amendments, if determined, which they were, to be sufficient by the city clerk, must be set at the council's next meeting, follow the city clerk's certification. While not directly applicable, CRS 3111-113, concerning ballot titles for initiated and referred measures, give council the following guidance in setting the ballot titles. Fixing the ballot title, the legislative body or its designated should consider the public confusion that might be caused by misleading titles, and show, whenever practical, avoid titles which the general understanding of the effect of yes or no vote would be unclear. The ballot titles should not conflict with those titles selected for any other measure that will appear on the municipal ballot in the same election. The ballot title shall correctly and fairly express the true intent and meaning of the measure. And these are his suggestions for titles for each proposed amendment. Form of government: Shall the Home Rule Charter of the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, be amended to provide for a mayor, council, administrator form of government, and in connection therewith, providing that the executive power to be vested in a mayor who is elected at large, and who appoints a city administrator to administer the daily affairs of the city with a salary recommended by the mayor and ratified by the city council, and making, conforming changes to the charter. Mayoral veto of budget: Shall the Home Rule Charter of the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, be amended to provide for a mayor veto of the city annual budget, and in connection therewith, providing that the mayor may veto the entire budget, or partially veto the budget by the city departments and/or funds, and allowing the veto to be overridden by three-quarters of the entire city council, and making conforming changes to the charter. Council also has on the agenda for its August 9 meeting, a resolution setting a ballot title for the question of approval, well, I won't go into that. Order of ballot questions: The Colorado statutes assign to the city clerk the duty of certifying the order of ballot questions in a coordinated election. CRS 1-5-203A, CRS-15-40755 gives guidance on how that order is determined. Candidates are listed first, followed by measures to increase taxes, measures to increase debt, citizen petitions, and referred measures. The city clerk, and he concluded that the two citizen-initiated charter questions should appear first, as they are the result of citizen petitions, followed by a trash franchise question, and any council-initiated charter change, as both are measures referred by the council. So is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to set the ballot titles for the two citizen-initiated charter amendments to read as set forth in the city attorney's memorandum to the city council dated August 9, 2010.
Second.
You have a motion, and it was seconded by Councilmember DeMott. Discussion on the motion? Please pull the council?
Oh, I...
Oh, Ms. Jay?
Okay. The first item, form of government, provided that the executive power be vested in a mayor who is elected at large, who appoints a city administrator to administer the daily affairs of the city, with a salary recommended by the mayor and ratified by the city council, and making conforming changes to the charter. Is there any veto attached to this as well, as far as the vote?
No.
No. The veto provision is in the second question, as you know. There's no, the first petition does not address the veto power of the mayor. The second petition, which was received, and which was declared sufficient, does address the veto power of the mayor.
Okay. And it's, and ratified by the city council. So the, that's where I'm confused.
I was wondering if the mayor could veto the ratification, and obviously not.
No, because that's, the, if the mayor hires, if this passes, and the mayor hires a city administrator, negotiates a salary with that person, that number, that salary dollar amount, gets ratified by the council. But the council would ratify that by probably a motion. That would not be something that the mayor could veto, because the mayor's veto is restricted to ordinances. Even if the second matter passes, the mayor's veto is restricted to the budget or divisions of the budget.
Okay.
But the term ratified by, the act of the council ratifying isn't subject to a veto. The act of the council's ratifying the salary is not subject to a veto.
So therefore, the council would be able to vote exclusive of the mayor on the hiring of the city administrator, as well as not be able to veto it, or not subject to the veto?
No. The, if the first question passes, and the form of government change is enacted, the mayor would hire the administrator. The council would not have any authority over that hiring decision.
The council would have no authority over the hiring decision?
That's correct.
Is that correct? Okay.
That's correct. Going on, you'll notice that it says that mayor appoints the city administrator, so now that's done. That's not something council has a role in.
Right, got it.
And then the mayor recommends a salary.
Okay.
And the council must ratify that salary number. The act of the council ratifying that salary number is not subject to a mayoral veto. Only in the event the second question also passes, the mayoral veto of the budget, conceivably the council, the council could ratify the city administrator's salary, which would have suggested to it by the mayor and the newly hired administrator. That salary gets put into the budget. The mayor, if the second question passes, the mayor could conceivably veto the budget, or a department budget, and the mayor would have the power to say, "I'm vetoing it because of the administrator's salary."
Okay.
That'd be a little unusual, because that salary is what the mayor recommended to the council, and the council then ratified. But the point being made is that the council does not have a role under this provision in hiring the administrator, but the council then does ratify the salary recommended.
Okay. I don't think that's clear in here. I feel as though, it sounds as though the council ratifies both the choice, as well as the salary. So I don't feel as though this reads clearly. That's why I'm coming up with it.
Well, you could certainly say, at the bottom of the first page, "And who appoints the city administrator to administer the daily affairs of the city, comma, the administrator's salary to be recommended by the mayor and ratified by the council."
I would be more comfortable with that.
So it would read, five lines in, "Appoint the city administrator to administer the daily affairs of the city, comma, the administrator's salary to be recommended by the mayor and ratified by the city council, and making conforming changes."
Well, is that an amendment, or is that, so you have to make that as amendment, get a second?
And...
I so move.
I was just going to ask if the city attorney could repeat it for me just one more time.
Go ahead, repeat it first, and then we'll get a motion on the table.
As proposed to be amended, I'll read the whole question. Shall the Home Rule Charter of the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, be amended to provide for a mayor, council, administrator form of government, and in connection therewith, providing that the executive power be vested in a mayor who is elected at large, and who appoints a city administrator to administer the daily affairs of the city, comma, the administrator's salary to be recommended by the mayor and ratified by the city council, comma, and making conforming changes to the charter.
Okay. So Ms. Jay, do you want to make that as an amendment?
I do.
Is there a second on the amendment?
Second.
You have a second by Councilmember Berry on the amendment. Discussion on the amendment? Please pull the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Now, we have the main motion as amended. Please pull the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. I believe that concludes our agenda for tonight. Move on to city managers' matters.
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
The attorneys' matters?
Nothing further. Thanks.
City clerks' matters?
Yes, just one reminder to everybody, citizens of Wheat Ridge, voters, the primary election is tomorrow, and closes at 7:00 PM. It's, again, it's a mail ballot election. There is not a polling place to visit, to push buttons. If you wish to vote and expect to vote, you should have already received your ballot in the mail, and those can be delivered to the county. They can always also be delivered to my office. We will man a ballot box here from 7:00 AM until 7:00 PM tomorrow, and then those will be hand-delivered to the county. So get out and vote. That's it.
Thank you. Before we go on to elected officials' matters, I wanted to ask for a moment of silence in honor of Petty Officer II. Justin McNeely III. of Wheat Ridge, who was killed in an accident in Afghanistan. His memorial services took place on Friday, August 6, in Wheat Ridge. So I would ask for a moment of silence. Thank you. Move on to Councilmember Sang?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Berry?
Yes, I wanted to let everyone know that the city of Wheat Ridge was awarded a $624,000 grant from Dr. Cog. It was a competitive grant for our project on, right out in front of City Hall. It's a 12, or 10-foot-wide, multi-use trail, which will go from 26th to 29th Avenue, and then cross over and go from 29th to 36th, or to 32nd. It was a competitive grant, so it's great that we got it. Staff put together a great application, and want to thank them for doing that. We will need to provide $156,000 in local match. The staff, engineering staff, has proposed that they are going to design the project and help obtain easement, so a lot of that would be staff time in order to put the project together. I think that fits well in with the adoption of the bicycle and pedestrian plan, because that's one of the key connections there. I wasn't here at the last meeting. I attended a conference in Ohio. I, one of the other task forces that Livewell Wheat Ridge is, is on a access-to-fresh-and-local foods project, and it's looking at food deserts in the city of Wheat Ridge, and getting access to fresh and healthy foods, and basically letting no child left inside, and getting them out, and getting them active, as well as looking at fresh fruits to schools. So I attended a conference where I went and visited several farmers' markets. Wheat Ridge Farmers Market is doing some new things that other farmers' markets in the metro aren't doing. We have an EBT machine, where we're accepting government benefits, which has increased the attendance at the farmers' market. I went and visited several markets in other cities that operate three days a week, all year round, and they were really vibrant community centers. And some of them have indoor facilities that the communities have worked on for a long time. I think this is one of the things that Wheat Ridge could do to, you know, brand itself in a special way, and for economic development. We met with a large corporation that works in garden projects, or products, and they're looking at trying to do some pilot and demonstration projects across the country. So hopefully that will continue and be fruitful. But it was great to see what other cities in Ohio, and Indiana, and Illinois are doing in that regard.
Thank you. Councilmember Reinhardt?
Yes. First, I'd like to say I'm pleased, Tim, that we were able to move forward the senior resource center project, and I think it'll be increasingly, it's good to see that asset of the community increasing. Second, I'd really like to thank the citizens who participated in this Citizens Advisory Committee, and all the citizens who participate in all of our committees, and on our boards and commissions, because that service itself is sometimes uncomfortable, and time-consuming, and difficult. And I think this committee had some unusual challenges, and I appreciate their time and participation, and I will look carefully at what they produced. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stites?
Yeah, just an observation before I get started here. You know, Wheat Ridge, I think we've had several million dollars worth of work done after the hailstorm in this last year. We got new roofs, a lot of paint, siding, you know, particular things like that. And then if you drive around, look at how many great huge dumpsters are sitting in the street, or in people's driveway. I think there's a lot of work going on, you know, building or new landscape, and I just think that's great. But it was just an observation that I had. Couple weeks prior, what is it, 21st will be that Saturday, so I ask again, all businesses on 38th, please clean up your lots and everything. This is a great time to relocate to Wheat Ridge, either your home or business, and if you need help, talk to staff or one of us. Please, as always, do a positive thing in your neighborhood. There's a lot of weeds coming up. Help your neighbors with those. And as always, please try to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
I thank you. Councilmember DeMott?
Yes, thank you. I want to thank everybody who showed up at the town hall meeting last week, and filled out the survey. The answers to the questions, and the information that was provided was invaluable in putting together our ballot question, and making our decision to put that on the ballot. I just wanted to thank everybody one more time.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. I would like to echo Davis Reinhardt's comments. There's nothing more valuable than volunteerism, and to have the people in our community come forward and volunteer the number of hours that they did to educate all of us, as well as the community members, on the different forms of government, was an incredible process to watch. I want to personally thank Mary Ann Mo. Keller, Amy Sherman, Cheryl Wise, Larry Schultz, Rhonda Boe, Gretchen Servini, Nancy Snow, and Ralph Mancinelli, for their hours of time that they spent in studying this particular issue, and coming forthright with the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jay?
I'm embarrassed to say that, at the time, we were listening to the recommendation that we did, that I didn't, I thought about it, did not thank them personally for their work. And I'm once again referring to the CEC Committee. They really did quite a job. work, and I'm once again referring to the CEC committee. They really did quite a job, listed the criteria, and tried to follow it quite well. So I appreciate their work, and they're... That's a group of really well-educated leaders in our community. Thank you to them.
Councilmember Langworthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to echo my thanks to them, to the CEC committee, because it's not an easy challenge taking on any volunteering, especially ones that... My understanding at the time, this discussions became quite heated, but I think that the end report is a valid report. And I know that there were some concerns that this was done just as a reaction to the ballots, but for me, and my history in being a member of the League of Women Voters, I took this as an opportunity to get information out on both sides, not just to say that one side is right or one side is wrong, but people need to understand the implications on the pros and cons of keeping what we have or moving to the recommended ballot motion, because there... As the report showed, there were 11 pros and cons for each. So there is a lot of information out there, and people, I would hope, take the time to go to our website and view the report and use that information when the time comes to vote.
Thank you. I wanted to thank Patrick and staff for reinforcing the business development zone district for the senior resource center and staff. You know, it's been a long time coming that we actually use some of our tools. I think this is a great opportunity for the senior resource center for the city of Wheatridge, and I want to thank council for moving forward that information tonight and those changes. But Patrick, good job on finding those nuances, bringing forth those changes that we needed a couple of weeks ago and months ago, that council approved. So things are moving along well, and with the changes we have in our building codes and the mixed-use zone district coming in, I think we really are can say that the city of Wheatridge, by the first of the year, is going to be really open for business. And I'm hoping that the senior resource center redevelopment will be our first project that we can actually say spurred some of the new changes on, especially on Chase Street between 32nd and 35th. We're also looking forward to the 44th and Watts project coming forth here pretty quick, and so all the work you've done on that with Urban Manual and the county commissioners, myself, you, we met with them, and that was a good meeting. So I think we've got some positive things happening in the city finally, and I appreciate it. So with that, we're adjourned.